Figure out how to get my agenda up here so I can see it and see people at the same time. And I believe we are all assembled, so I will begin the meeting. Good morning once again. I would like to start out by acknowledging the fact that we are meeting on the historical lands of the Kalapuaia people and Pinafu bands in particular, who occupied the Muddy Beak and various river drainages and are still with us today, although no longer here as residents, but they're much connected to the lands. I'm Zana O'Groh, Commissioner. I pass the baton on to Nancy Wyss, which is Vice Chair.
Nancy Wyss, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
Matt Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning, Joe Purvey, County Administrator.
Lance Cronin, County Council.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Brian Lee, Administrator.
Melissa Raff, Public Health Administration.
Sue Dan Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Jerry Starbuck, Public Works.
Some mornings we get no one to speak and other mornings everyone wants to chime in at the same time.
April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Hallie Lacy, Health Department.
Amy Wilson, Victim Services Manager with the DA's Office.
I know I saw Lilia Neville and Rachel Dinnus with us, I believe, as well. And I believe with that we will get going. Are there any announcements today? Are there any comments from the public? Hearing them, we will now turn to review and approval of the agenda. And right off the bat, I can tell you that we have a couple of items to add under New Business. Under 7.5, we will discuss and hopefully appoint a candidate to the Historic Resources Commission Board, David Mayfield. And under 7.6, we will discuss the letter to our legislators regarding HV2177, which would shift the cost of technology fees from the Oregon Justice Department to the county. And we will also have under other today, an executive session. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing them, I will move on and consider the agenda approved. Begin our work session then with item 4.1. We'll start off our update regarding emergency operations and department operation centers with Brian Lee. Morning, Brian.
Good morning, everyone. So some updates on our side. EOC this week is actually going pretty smooth. We have a bunch of clinics planned. April can elaborate, but we're definitely doing clinics on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday out at Rezur. And then we're also doing a clinic out in Elsie from 10 to 4 at the school out there. So that's sort of what we're mobilizing. We're doing basically five clinics this week and we're really, really engaged in getting all the logistical pieces finalized. We're also planning for our Monroe Clinic, which is going to happen next week, April 14th and 18th, sorry, April 17th and 18th on Saturday and Sunday. So again, we're looking forward to all of those events and getting out to the rural areas. Other than that, in the EOC, we're still working through our staffing challenges. HR has been a huge help on that and just fighting off fatigue and filling in gaps. But we are moving ahead, both teams, to make sure we get these clinics in operation and get vaccine out in the community. And that's all I had from the EOC side.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll move on then to the public medical operations center. Sue Dan Hoffman and April Holland.
I will turn it over to April for the report.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners Joe and all. I'm happy to provide an update on our vaccination efforts, but before I share vaccination news, I just want to take a little moment to acknowledge that the first week of April is Public Health Week. This year, we do lack time and perhaps energy to be perfectly honest for our traditional large deemed celebration of public health efforts. I do, however, want to extend broad thanks for the efforts of everyone during this public health year. I often say that public health is connected to everything and we have not in our lifetime seen a clear example of this. To our communicable disease team, both dedicated and expanded, thank you for the long hours, for bearing the weight of the individuals and the courses of lives impacted by this virus. To those who continue to work tirelessly to care for and protect the most vulnerable among us, the medically and otherwise fragile, those who are homeless and others at highest risk. And to leaders and everyone who continues to do your part, masking, distancing, giving up some precious moments in the interest of public health, thank you. My plea to everyone is to please get vaccinated as soon as you're able and please keep up the good work. We will get through this. Thank you. So on to vaccination, a big part of our public health year now, Public Health Week, Public Health Year. This morning, we had some big news from the Governor's Office and beyond that all Oregonians 16 and up will be eligible starting April 19th. So that moves us up a bit from the May 1 date that was previously in place. In the next few weeks, we may add 12 to 15-year-olds. You know, that still needs to go through the emergency use authorization process, but it's a possibility. And so we're starting to think about that. As Brian mentioned, we continue to vaccinate at a rapid pace and with a lot of volume and with great success. We do have clinics at Rezur Stadium Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We had about almost 4,000 first-dose appointments for this week, so it's our biggest week yet, for sure. And then from 10 to 4 in Elsie, a lot of work has gone into getting that, all the planning done for that and the specific outreach into that rural population. So we're looking forward to that. Elsie will be 150 Johnson &amp; Johnson appointments. And there's a mix of Moderna and Pfizer for Wednesday through Saturday. Our efforts to reach agricultural workers and people who are experiencing homelessness continue. We're getting out there every week, whether it's our wonderful immunizations nurse going out personally and vaccinating people who are homeless or other teams of ours going and through community partners, scheduling people into the Rezur clinics. People are getting access to vaccination. We've got a lot more vaccine going into pharmacies through state and federal programs, and that is going to increase. I will mention that there are some, not all the news is perfectly sunny. There's been an issue with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. You may have seen in the news. So we're not sure how much, if any, we're going to get in the next few weeks. We're keeping an eye on that and should know more in the next few days. All in all, you know, the teams here are partners and enrolled providers. We're seeing a big expansion in vaccine availability and it's a really good, really good thing. So we'll continue to do the work and we'll continue to focus on those who are most vulnerable. Please let me, if you have any questions.
April, I have one question, and that is, I know that before we expanded to new groups, we were having real trouble filling appointments. How's it going now at this point? Are the appointments filling?
Thanks for asking, Commissioner O'Groh. Yes, we opened up a large number of appointments. So we know what our baseline of vaccine will be, so we were able to go forward to the end of April and have one day per week where people could schedule out. So those appointments have all been filled now and those are a couple thousand extra appointments looking out. Those are done and filled. Earlier this week, there was an adjustment to the eligibility criteria where household members of frontline workers and of people who have underlying conditions were added to the eligibility list. And CDC updated their eligibility list and then OHA adopted that as well. So we've really seen an expansion in eligibility, which has helped. We still do anticipate that at some point in coming weeks, we will start to tip a balance and really have to work a lot harder to get people to come in. And that's where our Vaccine Confidence Coalition and other efforts really will come into play.
Thank you. Commissioner Malone?
April, I agree, having Public Health Week is, this is Public Health Year. I appreciate all your efforts. Accepting the Johnson &amp; Johnson is the, are you getting pretty good information on the supply that's coming in in a week or 10 days? So you can plan on, especially the Rezur scheduling, but is that getting better where you're getting advance notice and so it's easier to do your planning?
Thanks, Commissioner Malone. It's been a bit of a roller coaster. Every time it seems that we get somewhere consistent, something new is thrown into the mix and we are constantly pivoting. So we do have an idea, and this is new and good. We do have an idea of sort of what our floor is, our baseline of doses that we should be able to anticipate. But whether it's a manufacturing issue or some unexpected disturbance at the federal level, we cannot be assured of the exact number that we'd be receiving until probably on a Thursday for the doses we'd receive on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. And with the Governor's order on April 19, opening things up, do you anticipate that you'll be able to handle the people that have been added to the categories?
I do, yes. I think that it's really good timing, actually. We were starting to wonder, especially if we were to continue with the, this week's clinics are so huge that if we were to have 4,000 first-dose appointments moving forward, we'd really need to consider a request to open up by around that date, I'd be guessing. We may not get quite that much vaccine, but we'll be able to continue to add in appointments as we know what our allocations are going to be. And so what people will perceive, they may see a few weeks out what appointments look like, but also they should check regularly because new appointments will be added as we get those numbers solidified.
Great. And it's really good news to be able to emphasize the rural clinics and making sure that the people that aren't close to town have good access. I appreciate the Saturday or after 5 o'clock appointments so that people that have a hard time getting away during the day have good access. So I think basically you had good news, so I appreciate that. Keep the good news coming.
I'm doing my best. Thanks.
Thank you, April and team. Nancy, do you have any questions for April?
Okay. Actually, I'm sorry, one quick question. You mentioned, I think it was the Elsie clinic. How often does that go? How often does that help?
This is the first clinic. We'll assess, yeah, we'll assess additional need. There are still appointments open and right now, you know, so far we've been doing really targeted outreach for that clinic to ensure that people who are in that catchment area are the ones who can have access to appointments. I'm not sure, you know, how much that will open up in coming days, but there are still appointments open. And we are using Johnson &amp; Johnson, so there won't be a need for a second-dose clinic. But we'll continue to assess the need out there as to whether we need to go out and hold another clinic in the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. And thank you, as usual, for your hard work and the hard work of the entire team that's making all of these vaccination clinics possible and of course, doing all of the testing, tracing, and investigation work as well that's going on in the background. Don't lose track of all of that. So thanks.
Thanks. It's a great team.
And we'll move on at this point to Lilia Neville.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Malone, did you have something that you wanted to share?
I just wanted to say to April and her team, all the comments that I received, especially about the Rezur event have been positive, that it's well organized. Any positive comment? Thanks for all your hard work and the partnership with Samaritan and being able to get a lot of people through the Rezur appointments.
I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners. In preparation for this morning's update, I actually started to try and come up with a list of the multiple times that we pivoted since the last time I've seen you, but it turned out to kind of be a fruitless effort because we pivoted so many times. So I think that the most important tidbit that I need to make you all aware of, and you probably are already aware of it, is that, I think it was last week, if it wasn't last week, it was the week before, we moved away from using our vaccine assessment survey. So this is a tool that we have been using since the beginning of vaccine distribution to prioritize within the OHA priority groups. Part of the reason, of course, was due to vaccine scarcity. We had plans to discontinue the survey as we moved into the future. And I actually was giving an interview with a reporter and they were saying something about how it seems like a very, you know, quick decision that we pivoted from the survey. What I told the reporter was, you know, actually, we have a three-week communications plan to announce that we were moving away from the survey and, you know, help people through this transition. We implemented that plan in 36 hours. So yeah, it does kind of seem like it was fast in terms of moving away from the survey. What I can tell you though is that when we moved away from the survey, we had close to 33,000 submissions. So I had some degree of concern that the individuals who had participated in that process might feel disengaged or just frustrated that we moved away from a system that they had patiently used over the last 90 days. Thankfully, we haven't seen that kind of feedback and the transition away from the survey and some of the live scheduling has been really quite smooth. So then what I wanted to just kind of give an update, and I might, if I could ask folks who aren't speaking to mute themselves, getting a little bit of feedback, that would be great. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for a few quick slides to show you where we are from an information perspective, from hearing, from our community. So the last time I showed you numbers like this, I was reporting on January. So back here, you can see January. There are sub-page views on the COVID-19 website. So this is where we have all of that vaccine eligibility information. So between January and February, it doubled to 80,000 to 160,000 visits to our webpage resources. And in March, we did see a slight decrease. However, I just want to point out that just because it decreased from February to March, March is still substantially far exceeding January in terms of need for resources and information. I believe in January, we kind of decided that we needed to be more robust with our website information and so we could see the fruits of that labor here. Another area that I want to report out is with regard to our phone bank. Our phone bank was approved to receive five additional positions. We have filled four of those positions. And again, I want to point out that when I reported out to you the last time on numbers, I was reporting back in January. So in January, we had just over 1,000 calls in the call center. We are completely overrun. And so we did some hard work to recruit and bring on a team of CSRs and a CSR lead in that phone bank so that we could provide greater service to the community. Thank goodness we invested in that because here we can see in February, we skyrocketed up to almost 2,000 calls into the phone bank. And then in March, we did see a substantial dip in the phone bank calls, but again, March is still higher than January. The other, there are good news that I want to provide about our phone bank is in January and February and most of March, we were working to achieve our ideal goal of returning all voicemails within 24 hours to business days and to return all red flag calls within 24 hours. I'm really, really happy to tell you that we are achieving those ideal goals now. So thank you for that support for our phone bank. Sincerely appreciate it. And then lastly, a slide that I'd like to show is regarding our vaccine distribution blister strategy. This is a strategy that we implemented as soon as we stood back up in early January and we have been issuing weekly communications since January to this blister. So this top line in blue is our subscribers. So you can see that in January, it really was aggressively ticking up in terms of subscriptions. We achieved about 2,000 more subscriptions since February, but really in March is plateaued in terms of people who want to receive information from the county in this way. This middle line is our open rate. So you can see that we had a pretty consistent open rate of about 75% for the entire time that we've been issuing the email distribution, except within the last weeks in March. We're starting to see an open rate downturn. And then the last communication that we sent out last Friday, we actually only had a 50% open rate on that communication. And then the last line you can see down here is the did not open rate. So you can see that that's steadily increasing over time. And so what this just anecdotally tells me is that we've served that audience the information that they were wanting to receive from us. So I just wanted to show, I just wanted to show that kind of from start to finish because oftentimes we don't always get to see that when it comes to our communication structure. So while it might look like that's not very successful for our did not open rate to be climbing and our open rate to be declining, I actually think that it's indicative of serving that community with the information that they need. So that's what I have for you all this week. I am happy to go back and take a look at some more numbers if that would be helpful or answer any other questions you might have.
Well, I think that what, the information you presented provokes in me is a question about some of those audiences that are harder to reach and that don't subscribe for a weekly email update that aren't connected in that way. How are we messaging to those people, especially as eligibility now opens up so much more broadly? And the locations where one can get a vaccine are now And the locations where one can get a vaccine are now so much more complicated in terms of things of a broad variety of sites?
Sure. So I think a couple of things. In some ways, the broad variety of sites, we've seen a lot of community celebration and sort of confusion about that. Communities are working with their pharmacies really well, actually, and so we're not seeing a lot of frustration there, which is a great thing as well. In addition, though, to answer your, kind of the first part of your question in terms of reaching communities that aren't active users of our website or our e-news distribution and how would we reach those communities? What I would say is that's pretty broad and so we actually bifurcate them down into smaller audiences. So you heard April talk this morning and on other mornings about utilizing our relationships with community-based organizations to reach into those particular audiences. We also have a series of Spanish language and mum language radio ads that we'll be playing on Spanish and mum language radio stations to try and reach into a population that might maybe is not knowing that our vaccine email is a bilingual email communication in English and Spanish. And then I would say in particular in Alce, one tactic that I'm really excited about is we, so within Alce, one of the scheduling methods is walk in to the Alce Health Center. And so we deployed two reader boards on Highway 34 in Alce that says, "Need vax appointment? Question mark, walk in." So I'm really excited about that particular tactic. That tactic is really meant for folks who are traveling along our rural highways or who are not, you know, really connected with government and who just aren't really connected with government. And on a Sunday afternoon, driving by, might see a sign that says, "You know what, I actually do need my vaccine appointment. I'm going to stop in and make an appointment because I don't use the internet and I don't feel like calling someone. I want to talk to someone face to face and, you know, ask them my questions." So I'm excited about that. It's going to be a tactic that we replicate from Monroe Clinic. And, yeah, but I don't want to give the impression that I have all the answers and I can reach all the communities. We're always open to feedback, but I just wanted to provide a few examples of, you've got to go about it a couple of different ways.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Are there other questions for Lilia? Thank you very much, Lilia, for all that you and your team are doing. Greatly appreciated. And we will turn next to Heather Stevens, Economic Development Office. Kate Portia is away and not available, so we have Heather Stevens.
Thank you, Chair Ogierro, Commissioners. Good morning, happy Tuesday. As Chair Ogierro stated, I am not Kate Portia, but I hope to be a decent substitute for you today. Because I have not presented to you in this format, I thought I would first introduce myself in that I am Heather Stevens and I am the Economic Development Specialist for the Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office. I just have really three quick updates for you today, so I'll be brief. My first update is on the distribution of personal protective equipment, or PPE, for businesses in Benton County. As you know, we made an order, a large order through Business Organ about a month ago and we are anticipating a delivery of that any day now. But because we have not received that PPE shipment yet, our original timeline of hosting a contact lease free pickup every Friday in April has been moved to May. But should we receive the shipment, say tomorrow, we'll hit the ground running and get that out as soon as possible, but we thought May would be a good next target for us for now. The second item I have for you is the Business Right-of-Way Program or the BROW program. And as you may know, this program allows businesses to utilize public right-of-way parking spaces in downtown Corvallis for commerce. It was very popular and among businesses and visitors alike. So we've been asked to look into making this a permanent program, whether it's operated seasonally or otherwise, we're not quite sure yet, but as we gather feedback, we will determine that based on need and long-term benefit for the community. So that's an exciting one. The third and final one I have for you today is an update on the City of Corvallis Micro Enterprise CBBG Fund. It's been open for about three to four weeks now. And as you may know, this program is for businesses located within the city limits of Corvallis that employ low to moderate income employees. We've received about 30 interested parties through the portal at Community Lending Works. Of those, about half, because there are so many nuances to CBBG, only about half have qualified at this point. And Community Lending Works is working with them to complete the application and go through that whole process. So however, because we knew that the county is looking to set up a similar program, in all of our communications, we included a waitlist for businesses that were interested in this program at the county level. And we've received about 10 interested businesses. And another great part of this is when they sign up, because the programs are so similar, we're able to send them the City of Corvallis, like eligibility and required documents, and they're able to get started on putting those together so that when you guys are ready to go forward with the CBBG funding at the county level, they will be able to apply right away. But I know that you're getting an update on that later from Rebecca Taylor, so I will end there and, yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Go ahead, Pat.
Yeah, Heather, on the BROW program, I mean, you have your side of things, but there's local jurisdictions that also have a say. What kind of cooperation or conversations are you having with local regulations?
Commissioner Malone, I am not the person involved really with those conversations, so I'm not quite sure who's involved, but I can certainly find that out for you and send you an email letting you know who are, I think, fully chair authority is the contact for that, for this program.
Please, thank you.
Heather, what are you seeing in terms of community need at this point? Are businesses feeling better about things now that we are open a little bit more widely? If there's still a go panicky sense of need, what's the feel?
Commissioner Ogierro, that's a great question. We have seen the sort of franticness kind of diminish a little bit now that we are in high, although I think our continued presence at that level is a little bit daunting for them. I think we're all ready to move to a lower place, but I think for now, it's okay.
Yeah, I hope, you know, watching counties around us creep back up the other directions and hoping that we all will continue to behave ourselves so that we don't end up following suit. I'd rather stay where we are than do that yo-yo thing. So, thank you, much appreciated. Any other questions for Heather, Economic Development Office? Okay, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
And then we will wrap up this section of our agenda with a discussion led by Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see everyone this morning. I just wanted to touch base with you regarding our county facilities. As you know, the majority of our county facilities have been closed to public access for a number of months now. Many of our services, if not all of them, are being offered via the telephone, via online, through our website and other functionality. As you are aware, we have been evaluating when we should be reopening our facilities to public access. And the Executive Committee, I will call them the COVID Executive Committee, who I've been working with for now close to a year, if not over a year, has been really watching this closely. And what we had done several months ago was to come to an agreement with the Commissioners that we would consider reopening county facilities once we had gone to a lower risk level classification for two cycles, each cycle being the two-week cycle that the state follows. So we are, I'm happy to say, we have been now in the high-risk category for two cycles and as a matter of truth, we used to be in the extreme risk category and now we have been in the high-risk category, which is lower category, which is a good thing. We haven't dropped from high to moderate at this point. Hopefully we're doing that in the future. But our goal was to basically be in a lower risk category for two cycles before we would consider reopening to the public. With that particular metric in mind, that would have had us reopening to the public on April 12. However, the Executive Committee has been monitoring this and debating and discussing this. And after a most recent meeting that we had, the Executive Committee decided to recommend to the Commissioners that we would not reopen county facilities to public access until April 26, as opposed to April 12. So basically, what we're recommending is that we postpone our targeted reopening by two weeks. The primary purpose for that was to accommodate any surge that we might see related to spring break and we didn't want to be reopening our facilities to the public if we were experiencing a surge of infections within our community. So I would say that we are playing it safe, if you will. I think we're wise. We do not want to open and then have to close down a short time later. So we also wanted to give ourselves additional time for our vaccine clinics to roll out so that we could have more folks in the community that are vaccinated. And so as you've heard from our EOC team, we're doing a great job of getting those vaccines rolled out, which adds additional protection within the community. As you're aware, I have spoken to each one of you individually over the course of the last week regarding the possibility of postponing our reopening date to the public from April 12th to April 26. And I met with each one of you individually just to see if we were of like mind on this particular subject and it appears, based on my individual conversations with each Commissioner, that you do support reopening April 26, assuming that we don't increase our risk classification back to extreme in the meantime, which it doesn't look like we will be doing that based on the most recent metrics that were released yesterday. So I think we're in really good shape to target April 26. And I just wanted to confer with all of you collectively in this meeting as to whether or not each one of you still supported reopening on April 26. So the purpose of my discussion this morning is just to receive that feedback from you and see if the board collectively is on the same page.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that background and discussion and welcome comments from my fellow Commissioners. I do want to mention that, say, we will be reopening, but have to acknowledge the fact that we have been open by appointment to people to walk into most of our departments that have that client-facing role. So it's just that broken reopening and wide reopening that we will be, that we're discussing here.
That is correct. Our departments have done an outstanding job of providing services online and through appointment only. There are some of our operations, if you will, that have remained open, that are either open by state mandate or relative to our community health clinics, they continue to operate as well. This gives you a couple of examples of where we have actually been open to folks coming into the office or the health clinic.
Joe, I had, it seemed like when we talked about the reopening to the public, you also mentioned that Benton County has lost our staffing help from the Corvallis folks and so that puts an additional burden on us to get adjusted to. And I can see opportunity for our communication people to do a modest celebration, assuming that our numbers are still good and that we can reopen because of good behavior by most of our people and the vaccinations are moving along and therefore we're able to reopen to the public.
Mr. York, you are correct. We've had so many of our resources in terms of county employees redirected to the EFC over the course of the last year that it's challenging because we haven't had the capacity to really provide that effort 100% as well as reopening our facilities earlier. But now that we've been able to bring on additional resources, as Lilia had mentioned a little bit earlier, I think we will have that capacity by the end of the month to reopen to the public, which puts greater demand on our departments when we not only have to staff in person, staff the EFC and the vaccine clinics. So you are correct that that has been a consideration as well.
And I'll just jump in and say I support this plan. And just for clarification for anyone who might be watching, when we talk about reopening, we're talking about reopening in a limited capacity, you know, still doing the social and physical distancing and the mask wearing and all that, all that good stuff, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. I think it is important that we do manage that expectation. We're not just reopening our facilities so that we have 100% of our employees repopulate those buildings. That's not the intent. Our departments will be asking to still make sure that we do have the fiscal distancing in place and that, I can't tell you the exact percentage, but depending on each department, you know, we will have presence in the office, but we'll still have considerable number of employees working from remote locations and/or teleworking from home. So it's our intent to gradually repopulate our buildings over time, not as of April 26. As of April 26, we're just reopening to public access. We will have enough employees staffed in the office to handle the customers that wish to come in. But over time, we will begin to repopulate our buildings and I think it frankly will take us several months before we are somewhat back to normal. And I say that term loosely because I do think that we will continue to use teleworking and other remote working opportunities into the future. But hopefully that addresses your comment.
Thank you. Joe, do you want a motion on this topic or is just consensus fine?
Actually, I'm just looking for consensus at this point. You know, if something were to change, then I would come back and brief the board. I do wish to try and give departments at least, you know, heads up several weeks in advance, so that this will help if I can just gain a consensus from the board at this point.
Okay. I think what I heard was support generally all around. Okay, excellent.
Great, we will proceed with reopening as of April 26 unless something significant changes. If we do see a surge or our risk level increases, then I'll be back before the board to revisit this topic and possibly adjust that date. But at this point, we will forge ahead with planning for April 26. But at this point, we will forge ahead with planning for April 26.
Okay. Thank you. We will now move on to our next item of business, which is item 4.2. Welcome, Lilia Neville, back to discuss naming the 4500 Research Wave building.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was just here. So I long wish you were aboard again every time I come on camera. I'll try not to at least. How about that? And so, Commissioner, my sincere apologies. I am having a difficult time finding my checklist in the packet to refer from. So I will just go without referencing the packet. So this was a conversation that initiated about a year ago. We closed on the purchase agreement for the 4500 Research Wave building in mid-February, early to mid-February. And so at that time, I had just presented to the current board that was in place of February 2020, the naming contest that we held with Benton County employees. So if you all can remember that contest, we received, I think, over 30 submissions to that naming contest. I'll go ahead and put the link to that in the chat just so in case you all can't find the checklist in the packet, you'll have a such a secret tab.
This checklist was not in the packet, Lilia, so.
Is that why I can't find it? That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So I went ahead and pasted the link in the chat. If you want to go ahead and look that link where you can, otherwise I'll show my screen. I'm happy to do that. But essentially.
It doesn't show up in the chat yet either, so.
Well, then I think my Wi-Fi connection is low. Nope, I just chatted it to the organizers only. Hold on, let me chat it to everyone. Okay, there we go. That should work.
Thank you.
Now. Wonderful. Okay. So where we were last February was we just purchased the building. We had just had a county process to submit names for the building. And I brought the names to the Board of Commissioners, and the board at that time determined that they wanted to consider a name for the building that honored the people who were Indigenous civilians now named Benton County. And so the board determined that they wanted to reach out to the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of the Celeste to make them aware of our interest and to gain their input and rights in this process. Just after that decision was made, that the board was going to reach out to those groups, we were all across the world impacted by COVID-19. So that conversation has taken a bit of a backseat. The remodel process didn't take a backseat, just was slowed down a little bit. But as we plan to occupy the building at the latter half of this year, I'm working with all on signage for the building. And so it would be wonderful to have this building name decided sooner rather than later. I refer to the building frequently as 4500. I still hear some people refer to the building as our tenant's name, and that will make it less sense when our tenant no longer occupies the building. So I would encourage the board to try and make the building before we occupy it. But what the checklist is proposing is, or asking, rather, apologies. The checklist asks, does the board want to continue on the same path that the prior board was intentional on continuing down? Or does this board want to kind of make an adjustment to where we were a year ago and perhaps start a new process or go in a different direction?
I would welcome input from my fellow Commissioners. I personally like the process we've gone through and would love to contribute in some direction.
Sure. Could you just maybe go over a little bit more for me than the process that we've used? It looks like we put out a survey and requested, you know, possibilities. What else, what other steps did you guys propose?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Wise. So, excuse me. A little bit earlier on in the narrative, probably in 2019, I told the resource naming policy for our Board of Commissioners to review. And so we do have a policy that governs how we name our resources, whether it's the building or, I'm not sure if we would name anything else besides the building, but, oh, I'm sorry, parks, lands, that kind of thing, and all is encompassed in this resource naming process. And so I brought the policy to the board, and we reviewed the policy. And instead of the three-member board deciding the name based on the boundaries that the policy laid out, the board determined to request suggestions from Benton County employees. This process where the board requested suggestions from Benton County employees was actually how we named the Sunset Building. So the board last year decided that, you know, they wanted to kind of go in a similar process as they went for the Sunset Building and allowing ways to make suggestions. And so for 4500, I think that we had an open period of about a month, and we included the information that was relevant from the resource naming policy in terms of, you know, we can't name it Rainbow Kitty or something, like it has to have specific ties. Yeah, exactly, Nancy. I really like Rainbow Kitty, too. It has to have specific ties to Benton County. So we put those frames out there and asked Benton County employees to submit names that were with us on the frame.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. Is there any, is there a time for public input? Is that part of the process?
Per policy, the board just decides. So if the board would like to create a public process as part of this naming, that's absolutely a direction that you can provide to me today.
So when we had last discussed this, Nancy, we basically, as Lilia said, we were leaning towards the CaliQian names, either in CaliQian language or for place names that are of CaliQian origin. And that's why we had recommended that staff reach out to the folks at the Grand Ronde and at the Celeste's Confederate tribes in order to consult with them about it. But that's as far as we've gotten. And, yeah, it is per policy. It's up to us. We certainly could include a public process if we wanted.
So I'm, you know, if there's a policy in place that we're following, I'm good with that. You know, maybe some public input could come. You know, if we nail down a name or a couple of names, then maybe we could ask for input on, you know, at the end, if that makes sense?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest. Maybe we know this list down to half dozen or less and then engage the public at that point. And it would be nice to have input from the tribes so we can reach out again. I think that makes me, makes sense. What kind of, Lilia, what kind of timetable? It was a deadline.
I believe, and thank you, Paul, for being here. So tell me if this isn't amenable. I believe it would be ideal to have the name wrapped up by July 1, so over the course of the next three months. If we occupy the building potentially in September, that would, you know, maybe gives me two months to get the building signed. Paul, is that a reasonable timeline, unreasonable? What do you think?
Yes, ma'am, that's reasonable. I think July, maybe August is the last to give us time to get all the re-finding packages, building signage packages, and everything finalized before we start occupying.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. So Commissioner, let's say June 15. And then let me actually open up my calendar and say, oh, that's amazing, June 15 is a third Tuesday of the month. So how about we plan to make a decision on either June 1 or June 15? Does that sound like a plan, Commissioners? Wonderful.
Can I, I would choose for June 1 just because one of my favorite little people, it happens to be my daughter's birthday is June 15. So, you know, we'll see what we're doing that day.
Sounds great, Commissioner Wise. Absolutely. Okay. One last question for you all, on my part at least. When we last had this discussion, former Commissioner Harameo wanted to take the lead in initiating contact with the tribes and having the conversation. Would that be of interest of the current board to have the current board chair take on that role? Or given that now, a year later, we do have our new EDI coordinator, would that be something that you would want our EDI coordinator to be involved in? Is it something that you would prefer a different process that I haven't thought of as well?
You know, I think that Johan could definitely play a role, but given that these are tribal nations, so is sovereignty, I think that it probably makes sense for Mia as chair to reach out. And then I may end up passing the conversation along. But I think I would feel better about that approach, more appropriate.
That certainly makes sense to me. Commissioners, Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Malone, does that sound like a direction that you're supportive of forward?
Sure, I'm comfortable with that. And then, I'm sorry, Pat, go ahead.
No, I'm finished up, Nancy.
I was going to move on to a different thought, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So that sounds, sounds good, Lilia. Appreciate getting this started back up. It's kind of a vague memory at this point, what we talked about a year ago. And, you know, on the last topic, we talked about getting somewhat back to normal. So this is, this is timely and giving us a couple of months to work through this, I think, makes sense.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Johan, for taking me. Appreciate that.
Oh, no problem. So just thinking back to the public participation piece, you know, I don't think it has to be anything, you know, huge, like sending out surveys or, you know, undertaking a whole bunch of work. But maybe if we just had like a public hearing, you know, with our final name choice and just have an opportunity for anyone who would like to comment, to comment, and, you know, if no one shows up, then that's an answer, too.
That's, yeah, thank you, Commissioner, for putting that consideration out there. I hadn't thought of that public hearing component, but there is, there is a nice notification process to this part of that. So that's something I'm hopeful to. Okay, I've got that in my notes. So Commissioner Ozer, will you just want to follow up with Johan and myself after you've had a chance to take some next up?
Yep, indeed I will. I will probably copy you both on any formal communications I make so that you're in the loop. That'll be interesting.
Wonderful. Thank you all. I think with that, that is my agenda topic this morning, and I think I was able to help you all get back on track.
You were. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ozer, I just wanted to see if Paul had any inputs considering that he has joined us this morning.
No, facilities have no dog in the fight as far as the name of the building goes. You know, as long as it's pronounceable, you know, letters turn into numbers, you know, for the long run on time. So, you know, anything under 20 characters would be nice. And, but otherwise, really have no dog in the fight. Please name it Bob and move on.
You make me laugh. Thank you. Okay. Bye, Lilia. Thank you, Paul. We will move on then to item 4.3, Discussion of Remendos to 2019-21 Biennium Budget, Supplemental Budget Number 21101. And Jen Ambul is with us. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Commissioners. I realize that the lighting in my office is extremely awful right now. But that's all right. You don't really need to see me. You can be here. So I am coming to you this morning with, as Commissioner Ozer has said, the supplemental budget package 21101. And within this package, there are seven funds that we do need to just discuss this week before we go to the public hearing component on the 20th. You should be aware of all of these requests. I did, I believe, discuss most of them when we went over the quarterly report, so I don't see there being any surprises whatsoever in this packet. Going forward, we're going to start with the general fund. And within the general fund, we are requesting a net appropriation increase of $5,085,000. And within that increase, the bulk of it is increasing general government operations, $5 million. That is the result of receiving the FEMA funding. And we are asking to increase the appropriations just to have the authority to make those expenditures for those vaccination clinics we're running right now and other items due to the COVID pandemic. Within the Public Safety Program, there is a decrease of $384,686. This decrease in appropriations is to create a transfer appropriation within the same account in order to move the Adult Drug Treatment Court appropriation authority over to Benton County Behavioral Health. I do realize I need to update my verbiage now since we've got that changed from mental health to behavioral health. So I'm going to just jump down a line for a second. So you will see that the offset to that is a transfer to other funds where the appropriation then is increasing the $384,686. That is the creation of the transfer authority to move those funds to Fund 521, which you will see later on in this list. And then lastly, in the, yes, Commissioner Malone?
Oh, before we get too far past the $5 million FEMA funds, that's, there's no 25% match with that, with those dollars. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. I would defer to Mary if she's on here because she would have more details on that.
But this is part of the CARES Act from last year, or is this separate?
No, sir. It's completely separate.
Okay.
This is a FEMA funding that we have to ask to be reimbursed for. And there is no match. There is no 25% on this particular FEMA funding.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. And then just to wrap up the general fund then, within the Community Services Operations, we do need to increase the expenditure authority $85,000. And that is simply because we did receive COVID funds for the Small Business Emergency Grant Program. And then we did eventually pay, for payments to other governments for grants, for COVID grants. And we had some unawarded budget amounts that we paid back into the grant cycle so it could be redistributed again. And so that was an unanticipated expense. So we do need to increase our authority for that action. Are there any other questions on the general fund? All right. The Local Option Levy Fund, the total net appropriation increase that I am asking for is $5,900. And that is simply because we did have some refunds of tax interest on large appeals this go round. We had discussed that previously and I had to go talk to Mary to get a better explanation and had sent that information to you. There is increased revenue in our tax interest account. So I'm just using that as a resource of funding and just requesting that we offset that in the line for the refund of tax interest. Are there any questions? Nothing yet? Okay. The Employee Benefit Trust Fund is next on the list. And the net appropriation increase is $0. We are just reclassifying the appropriation authority. We're asking to move $3,600,000 from contingency to offset the increased appropriations in claims expense in our Medical Self-Insurance Fund. And there is the revenue within the fund to support that increase in appropriations. We're just moving the funding, or sorry, the expenditure balance out of contingency. Any questions?
I do have a question on this one. And I have been following this with interest as we are self-insuring just to see whether we have a good handle on our expenses year to year. And I know that if this will come into play again as we're putting together the budget, how much money we want to have in this contingency fund as we learn what our expenses are. Do we have much, do we have what, maybe two years, three years worth of data at this point? I'm looking forward to seeing that presentation and to better understand the dynamics of this fund.
And we will talk to you about that. And we are building a balance. So, yeah, we will have a conversation with you about how we're doing.
So even with this transfer, we still are slowly able to build it on?
Right. Yeah. We're fine.
Okay. Okay, that was my, my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mary. Always a lifesaver. So next one would be the Intergovernmental Services Fund. And there is a net appropriation increase asked of $175,344. What that is, is within the IT Operations, sorry, not IT Operations, the IT Infrastructure Replacement Account. They did have a larger than anticipated beginning balance. So I'm asking to increase their beginning balance and then consequently increase the appropriations for the equipment purchase. These are planned equipment purchases that were approved in the capital plan. But for some reason, the amount was not correct in the budget. So I'm just asking to make that essentially right in whole so IT can finish those projects this biennium. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Next would be the Trust Fund where there is a net appropriation increase of $98,000. And that is the Benton County Cultural Trust. They did receive funding source, funding source of COVID funds and then pass those out to other agencies as grants. And so that was an unanticipated expense in their budget. And so in order to offset that, we're asking to increase the appropriation authority there. Are there any questions on that one?
And for Nancy and, I don't know if Pat, you may be aware of the Benton County Cultural Trust. We are the fiscal agent for them. That's why we are doing this. We don't have anything to do with managing those dollars. They're all dispersed by the local cultural trust. But we do provide financial services.
And then next up would be the Tax Title Lamp Fund. The net appropriation increase is $300,000. There is increased revenue within that fund. And the increase in appropriations was for the unanticipated senior deferral payoff on the Blodgett property. And then I did add a little extra in terms of appropriation authority in case we have any other remaining unanticipated expenditures for the rest of the biennium. I had already been here once with this fund. I don't want to come back again after this.
Who, what's the Blodgett property?
Mary, what's the Blodgett property?
It's the, it's the house on Norton Creek, just as you, on Highway 20 in Norton Creek. There is that house little up on the bluff that we foreclosed on. And it has senior, senior deferral lien on it that we had to pay off in order to sell it. So you drive by it, you know, if you go to the coast, you can see it. It's right on the road.
Okay. No, thank you.
All right. And then the last fund would be the Benton Health Center Fund. And here is the offset to that appropriation change we did make in the general fund of $384,686. And so the funding for that is the transfer from the general fund to the Adult Drug Treatment Court in Fund 521. And then that would be the increase in appropriations for the remainder of the expenditures in the program for the biennium. I do fully anticipate actually coming back to you one more time with the Adult Drug Treatment Court simply because with Danielle being in the EOC and all of the other things going on, I think we need to touch base and increase appropriations for all the staff costs that are now going to be in there. We just have not had the time to sit down and go over that. So before June, I will be back here with at least the Benton Health Center. And then, as Mary will discuss later, with doing the appropriations for Fund 107. But as of now, these are the changes that we are requesting. Are there any other final questions?
Just a comment. Jen, I appreciate bundling things so we handle a bunch of these at one time. And like you say, most of these we've already discussed in some, at some level. And so, and that was, my question is probably one, one more of these sessions before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, sir. I would anticipate that I will have to come back one more time to do some final wrap up on some items, especially with all the money that seems to be coming our way lately in terms of pandemic funding, to put it bluntly. So I think we're going to have a couple of other items to just tighten up and clean up. So I would anticipate being back hopefully in May, no later than early June.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Jen or Mary on the supplemental budget? Okay. Then believe we will be proceeding to a public hearing on this matter.
Nope, not yet. Commissioner?
Not today. Yeah? Not today, but there is a motion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you weren't trying to do it today.
Nope. Nope.
Thank you.
Ready for motion?
Indeed.
I move to, move supplemental budget number 21101 to our April 20th, 2021 Board Meeting as a public hearing.
Second. Paul in favor, so just try with an eye. Eye? Eye. Okay. Thank you. We will see you back here again then on April 20th for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That completes our work session business. And I would like to take a five-minute break with feedback by 10:25. So that would mean an eight-minute break.
Prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2021 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month and encourages all residents to dedicate themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and parents.
Thank you. And I also would like to acknowledge the message that you sent out yesterday announcing that you, or that your board sent out that you're moving on, moving to Portland with your family, and that there is a search for a new Executive Director for ABC House. But you've done such a fantastic job of the organization, helping it grow and prosper and move into a new home. We will miss you. So, best of luck as you move forward into next chapter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is, this is bittersweet, leaving, leaving this community that has been so incredible to me and to my family and to ABC House. I'm excited about the new challenges and the new adventures, but I am, I'm very sad, I'm very sad to go. So, thank you very much for your support and for Benton County's support of ABC House and kids in our community.
You're most welcome. Are there questions for Jenny about ABC House or Child Abuse Prevention Month? Or do I have a motion for acceptance of proclamation?
I will move to proclaim April 2021 as National Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Benton County.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to our last proclamation of the morning. And I will read this one. In the matter of proclaiming April 2021 as National County Government Month, the nation's 3,069 counties and county equivalents serve more than 300 million Americans, providing essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities and provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And under the leadership of the National Association of Counties President Gary Moore, NACO is demonstrating how counties matter, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the coronavirus epidemic, pandemic. And each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. As we face a global pandemic of COVID-19, counties are the front line in emergency response. All across the United States, county public health officials are working hand-to-hand with emergency responders to therefore prevent managed COVID-19 infection. Counties are truly on the front lines with managing coronavirus response. Nationwide, we are responsible for nearly 1,000 hospitals, 1,900 public health departments, 800 long-term care facilities, and many other functions to keep our residents healthy and safe. And equity and health are core values for Benton County communities, and all county employees are working to staff our COVID-19 emergency operations and to provide core county services while protecting the health of everyone. Now more than ever, Benton County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and effective ways. And as the ultimate safety net, county investment in public health and affordable, accessible, and equitable healthcare are critical to support physical, psychological, and economic health of our communities. Counties are forging creative strategies with public, private, and nonprofit partners to protect older Americans from COVID-19 while also minimizing the harm of social isolation. And counties are a critical partner at the table with federal, state, and municipal leaders to support economic resilience and to address health, safety, and equity across the United States. And the National Association of Counties theme of National County Government Month this year, "Counties Matter," has never been more pertinent. Benton County is one of the original counties from before the establishment of the Oregon Territory, has a long distinguished history of service to its residents, and continues to adopt innovative practices to serve its residents in the present and future. Now therefore, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2021 as National County Government Month and encourages all county residents to actively participate in their county government.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Okay. I move proclaiming April 2021 as National County Government Month.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have to say that I, well, I took advantage of the pre-NACO conference this year, at least in terms of signing up. The National Association of Counties National Meeting didn't get much attention from me this year online. It was just too difficult to try and attend a conference in an online mode. And I, I'm sure I'm expressing feelings that we all have about how ready we are to gather again in person when public health will make it possible. National Association of Counties does a great job for us, but I think it was really only the most dedicated folks that made it to go to that online conference. Okay. Moving onward in our agenda. We are now at a point where we are ready for public hearings. However, it's not yet 11:00 AM. So, we will wait until 11:00 AM, so we have about seven minutes break, and we will return for our public hearing number one at that time. We can leave and hold our public hearings for the day. The first public hearing is in the matter of hearing and the first reading amending Chapter 5 ballot measures for Benton County Code, Ordinance Number 2021-0301 with Vance Cronty. Vance, sorry. Vance Croney.
Croney.
Council. (laughing). Croney and county, you know, it's a shortcut. James Moniz is also listed here, but I don't see James yet online.
And I think that, I think that's okay. This is purely a housekeeping amendment. Oregon Secretary of State's Office, the Election Division publishes a referendum manual. The referendum manual sets out the process and the timeline for filing ballot measures, referendums, et cetera. Turns out that over time, the Secretary of State's Office has amended the timeline for filing the ballot measures such that our code no longer complies with state guidelines. So, right now, the Secretary of State's reference manual calls for deadlines of 81 days prior to an election is the deadline by which a ballot measure must be filed. Unfortunately, we have two provisions in Chapter 5 that have two different timeframes. One says 85, one says 80. Neither one of them are 81. So, we're saying, hmm, might be a good time to update our code to bring ourselves back into alignment with the state timeline. So, that's what this amendment to Benton County Code does. It amends Section 5.010 subsection 3, subsection B as in boy, A as in apple, and Section 5.325 to state that the ballot measure filing deadline is 81 days prior to the election, and that would synchronize this with state requirements.
Are there any questions for Vance on this matter?
Would you like a motion?
Not yet. I need to find out whether there are any folks that would like to present testimony on the matter? Is there, I don't believe there's anyone that has signed up. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to this amendment of Chapter 5 of Benton County Code. Now I'm ready for a motion.
I will move to an act, Ordinance Number 219601, amending Chapter 5 of Benton County Code, conducting.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The first reading, I might be able to do it, Vance.
Okay. This is the big test.[1647.31][1647.31](laughing).
Before the Board of Commissioners of the State of Oregon for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Chapter 5 of the Benton County Code, Ordinance Number 2021-0301, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby ordains as follows. Is that as far as I go?
Short title?
The short title is, "The Ordinance Shall Be Known as Amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 5."
Yes, there you go. Wow. I am, I am, I am expendable now.[1683.11][1683.11](laughing).
The second reading will be on April 20th, 2021, and the effective date of this pass is May 20, 2021.
Perfect.
Okay. That was a swift one. Okay, on to the next. Once again, Vance, you are before us to conduct our next public hearing, which is in the matter of public hearing and first reading amending Chapter 9 Animal Control of Benton County Code, Ordinance Number 2021-0302. And Lynn McKee is also here with us for that.
So, I'll just set stage real quickly. This also is very, should be a very brief public hearing. Lynn had brought forward her concerns along with the Fair Board's concerns that the current iteration of our exotic animal ban inadvertently includes a ban on the equidae family, which includes horses, zebras, burrows, donkeys, and has asked the Board to amend Chapter 9 to exclude the equidae family from the exotic animal ban at the fair. And it's a very, very simple fix, no text amendment, other than to add into Benton County Code, Section 9.805, Subsection 4, Section I, the words "accept equidae." And so that it's a very clean, very simple amendment. But it's also done in conjunction with Lynn's efforts to take a fresh look at the exotic animal ban. And I'll let Lynn give the Board just a quick update on that, just so that the record reflects the context within which you're reviewing this particular amendment proposal. the context within which you're reviewing this particular amendment proposal.
Thank you, Vance. Thank you, Commissioner. I have been working with Trudy Oberlin, the Fair Board Chair, to put together a working group to evaluate the ban and bring any recommendations of additional changes to the Board. And we have confirmed membership right now in this working group is Erica O'Neil, the Benton County Animal Control Manager, because they will be in charge of enforcement. We want to make sure they're involved. We have Sarah Spangler, the Director of the Chintami Wildlife Center, to represent nonprofit wildlife organizations. We have Brad Tillman from Brad's Reptiles to represent the profit traveling shows segment because he is a local Corvallis business who was impacted by the ban and his reptile shows. We also have Dan Rosenberg, who's on the park board. He is a biologist from OSU Department of Fisheries and Wildlife. And we are potentially going to invite the new Director of the Heartland Commune Society to make sure that there is an animal welfare representative on the working group. So if you're comfortable with that, I will begin meeting with the working group. If you have any addition of perspectives you'd like me to include, please let me know.
That sounds like an excellent working group. The only folks that I don't see represented on that are, is anyone from 4H? But I also know that 4H interests are pretty well represented on the Fair Board, so I expect that we probably have that perspective covered.
Okay. Would you like me to go ahead and invite Carolyn Ashton from OSU extension?
I think it makes sense.
Okay, I will reach out to her.
It's a great group, though, otherwise. And I had not heard that we had a new executive director of Heartland Commune Society. I'm eager to learn more about that, too.
Yes, I just found out about that from Trudy because she's very active in fundraising for them. And I don't know how to pronounce his last name, Chuck Tortillo? Has anyone met him yet? Okay, all right. But we'll follow up with him because we did want somebody who's in the animal welfare side of things to make sure that we have their perspective.
That sounds good. Okay. So are there, at this point in time, are there questions from the Commissioners? Okay. Then we will entertain questions and input from the community, from the public. Are there any folks wishing to make public comment? Hearing none. I am ready to entertain a motion with respect to this amendment to county code.
I will move to an act ordinance number 20219-0302, amending Benton County Code Chapter 9, and to conduct a first reading.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye. 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 Okay, moving on to the first reading. Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon for the County of Benton in the matter of amending Chapter 9 of Benton County Code Ordinance Number 2021-0302, the Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby ordains as follows. Short title, "This Ordinance Shall Be Known As Amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 9." The first reading is just conducted. The second will be on April 20th, and the effective date will be May 20th, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, do you have a timeline for the working group's efforts?
I am hopeful over the next, they've already committed, so I'm hoping to get them together over the next couple of weeks for the first meeting. And then in another, I would think it would take a few meetings, I would think, hopefully by, if only June, we could bring back our recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. With that, we are on to new business. Thank you, Vance, and thank you, Lynn. We will move into a discussion and decision on approving a resolution affirming Benton County's support of the Fair Housing Amendments. Mary and Rebecca.
Yeah, still morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I was just on the phone with Rebecca. I said, Rebecca, are you joining me for this meeting? So I'm happy to see Rebecca has joined me for this meeting. This item is to reestablish the Fair Housing Resolution that we have had in the past, and we've just kind of let it slip as our participation in CDBG program has waned. And so now we're asking you to support the Fair Housing Resolution. And I do believe this will be an annual reaffirmation going forward as we participate in CDBG. And so there really isn't a lot of discussion. You may, I think we're getting closer to where we're actually going to be ready to apply, meeting all requirements. I think the last part is on Johann's plate. Is that right, Rebecca? How close are we to being done with this?
Yeah, so this item, they all were studying our additional announcement in the newspaper and both the public places, the high facilities, they go, these are the little, I guess, the little story, I'm sorry, is not, they go to the check, so, and Johann, but this is here, this is, and then there's the L E T.
Rebecca, there's a lot of echo behind you. I'm not sure if it implies that it's a little hard to hear. But are there questions for Rebecca from Commissioner Weiss to Commissioner Malone with respect to what she just informed us?
If I could just do a mic check here, is that better? Okay, thanks.
Much better. Okay. So this is essential in order to be able to get those CDBG micro enterprise dollars out the door and to be able to apply for the next tranche of CDBG dollars that we have on our agenda a little bit later with respect to childcare. So yes. Are there any questions about approving, affirming the Fair Housing Amendments? Okay. I would happily entertain a motion in that case.
I will happily make a motion to adopt the resolution affirming Benton County's support of the Fair Housing Amendments.
All in favor signify with an aye. 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 Okay, thank you. That was a swift piece of business. We will, Rebecca, I guess that's it. Thank you. Move on to 7.2, Discussion and Decision to Establish a Finance System Analyst Position. Mary and Tammy.
I don't see Tammy on the, I don't see Tammy on the meeting right now. So I don't really have the agenda checklist, but I can tell you what I think it says, is that Financial Services is asking for a new position, and the position will be a finance system analyst position. This is a position we probably should have had many years ago, but we don't, we haven't, you know, we, I guess, soldiered through it and we tried to do as best we could. And I think as we're looking to recruit and develop, we're finding that, one, I don't think anyone wants to work the hours that I've been working or that Debbie's been working, and this will lighten the load in that, and Ashley has some consistent operations across the board and opportunities for training. And it's just, it's something we've needed for a long time, and so we're asking to establish this position and also to be able to, we would like to start recruiting for it prior to the end of the year so we could get this in place as soon as possible. And I think you have the numbers. I can't tell you the numbers. I think it's probably in your agenda of the cost.
Yes. Are there questions? Okay, Pat, you found it. And are there questions at this point? I know that Joe is also very familiar with this agenda item. We can't hear him, however. Are there any other questions for staff with respect to this agenda item? I am fully in support. I agree that we need to have that systems analysis capacity to be able to use units to its full effect and to provide support for finance staff. It's a big job to take care of all of the system's needs and to do the other work at the same time. Okay, if there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
Just a comment, we've talked about this before, and with all the, like you say, we get into this position previously and with COVID and all the federal monies and deadlines, this just makes sense a lot. I would be glad to move to approve the establishment of one regular position as a finance systems analyst.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify with an aye. 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 Thank you.
Well, thank you. I, everyone here will appreciate that.
Commissioner, Joe Kirby, I just wanted to interject real quick. I had to turn my camera off because I'm having Wi-Fi issues, so I apologize I didn't weigh in earlier, but I was just able to get GoToMeeting to kind of free up. But anyway, I just wanted to also explain one other topic in support of this or one other item in support of this, and that really is, as we look to the future and Mary's retirement, and we look to restructuring the department, this position really is an essential position. And last biennium, we decided to not add this position, and we added a different position, which was also necessary, but we probably should have tried to add both positions during the last biennium. And this is really important in terms of being able to have some of our staff that are currently in the department to be able to perform at a higher level relative to the work that they're doing, especially as we see Mary transition out of the organization and are trying to also promote from within to the degree that we can. It's really necessary that we take some of this work that's been landing on others in the department and get this work off of them so that they can, in fact, do their jobs and that they really haven't been able to do because they've been tied up with so many of these system issues.
Excellent.
Just a comment, let's see here. I appreciate you including organizational charge. And I guess my other comment was, it's a theme we've talked about, but adding depth in different departments so that we're not so dependent on one person carrying the load. So this, like Joe said, this probably should have been done earlier, but now's a good time. So I'm looking forward to, hoping we can get them on board before the start of the
Excellent. Okay. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Thank you. The next item on our docket is 7.3, Discussion and Decision Approving the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Agreement or Grant, CAPA. This is a regular exercise that we have to go through in order to get funding for our assessment function. It doesn't fund it completely, but it definitely makes a difference. And Jane, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Jane Severs, and I'm a financial analyst over in Central Finance Services. And I'm here to present the CAPA grant application for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. And this application is submitted to the Oregon Department of Revenue on an annual basis for consideration to participate in the grant. And just for reference point, the projected revenue for this next fiscal year that we'll get from this grant is about $440,000. So it's pretty significant. And one note that I want to say is that this, the application that we submitted with the agenda checklist is, it has the preliminary budget for assessment and all the other departments, but there will be budget adjustments. So we'll have to come back with the final numbers later in the month to get the final Does anyone have a question on it?
So at this time, we are looking to approve the CAPA grant document to be submitted. And as I understand it, usually we don't have the final version until after the budget's been completed. Is that correct, Mary?
Yes, because of the timing of the state that they're required to, prior to have this submitted by May 1st, that we preliminarily approved particularly the assessment budget because this is the whole of assessment and the piece of finance, the dust tax collections, and a bit of IT and the BOTA as well. So yeah, we would amend it before we're final with it.
Are there other questions about the CAPA grant? Nancy, you just unmuted. Do you have any questions?
Oh, nope. I was just getting ready to either second or make a motion. I can make the motion. I move to approve the 2021-22 CAPA grant document certifications and resolution as presented and authorize the chief financial officer to digitally supply the online documents on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and submit to the Oregon Department of Revenue.
I will second that.
Okay. All in favor signify with an aye. 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 Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Okay. And the next item is a appeal that we received from the WCP for support for their upcoming Juneteenth celebration, commemorating the emancipation of enslaved black people in this country, but particularly in Texas, celebration of some of the last folks emancipated after the Emancipation Proclamation. And this is the 50th anniversary of the Corvallis Albany chapter of the NWAAP, so they would like to make this a more special celebration. And there were various different levels of support they were asking. I can tell you that in terms of the request that the speaker, that they had hoped to vote, Kome Alexander is not available for Juneteenth, but they are looking for an alternative speaker. You may have noticed that Kome Alexander is going to be speaking as part of an OSU series in the next month or so. So he will be virtually in the area, just not at the NWAAP Juneteenth celebration. So this is, again, one of those responsive grants we have made out of the Board's budget. We do have funds remaining in this budget line item for this year. We do have funds remaining in this budget line item for this year. So I would love to know whether we all want to support the Juneteenth celebration and it's so, it's what level and for which part is there at? And do you have the email in front of you that has the information, I suppose, that's the other element?
I am looking for that email. It's about it.
I can send it to you again? With winging on its way. Basically, they were, there are various different elements. One, the lowest level, and we can contribute any, we want to, from, you know, $250, $500 up through what the maximum that they're looking for, and that is for a speaker's fee, that's $6,000. The other items that they were looking at were support of the Wakanda Warriors and Allies. This is their youth program with NAACP and they've done a fantastic job in the last two or three years, getting young children of Black and biracial families together and providing a lot more support in the community for Black identifying people because there's not been a large population here for a while and people are pretty scattered and didn't have a sense of community. So this has been a great community building program. They're also looking for support for food for the Juneteenth celebration. This is probably going to be virtual, but we don't, they don't know yet. So they, like the ADC House, may also be looking at doing some sort of a remote food option for their celebration. I don't know. And then as I mentioned before, the programming and support for a piece of, for all of a speaker's fee. So that is the proposal at this time.
I have a question. If we donate money, but come out of our, like discretionary funds or?
It's our board, the same item that we discussed before, the board discretionary funds, responsive funds.
Do we know how much is currently in that fund?
I don't recall what the precise number is, but the last time that Lilia was with us when we discussed this particular fund, it had, it was more than $10,000. I don't recall the precise figure. Lilia is here, she can tell us.
Hey, Commissioners, I just popped in on the tail end of the discussion. You were talking, are you talking about other operating expenses within the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So that one for the remainder of the biennium, still has plenty of funds in it. Off the quick top of my head, I want to say that we budgeted approximately $25,000 across the biennium, only spent maybe 10 of it. That's really rough off the top of my head.
That was off my recollection as well. So I'm, I'm happy to support their request and I'm open to hear what the other commissioners think of what our level should be.
I would suggest that we support this effort at a $1,000 level.
Discussion? I can tell you that it's likely that we will, we may receive a request again from NAACP in the next fiscal year, next biennium, for the Freedom Fund Bank, which is their biggest fundraiser of the year. And given that it is the 50th anniversary of the local chapter, I would not be surprised if they wanted to do, do that up. So I too am comfortable with a, with a $1,000 support level.
That sounds good to me. Should we make a motion or?
Indeed.
I move to set aside or earmark a $1,000 for the NAACP Juneteenth celebration?
I will second that.
Okay, I don't think we need necessarily earmark it, but, sorry, I stumbled there on the words. So that's okay, that's okay. Uh, yes, okay, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. It looks like Joe is having some real instability of his connections, left and hopefully he'll be back. But thank you for that and I will follow up and let the fundraiser for the Juneteenth program know about this and work with Teresa and with Mary Otway to make it happen. And Joe is back. So our next item of business is to take a look at the letter, the draft letter about House Bill 2177. And that is also not in the package.
Excuse me, I think, Zane, I think you skipped over 7.5, the HRC appointment?
Oh, yes, you're right, I did. I knew there were two things that I'd added and thank you. The next item is the 7.5, the, discuss the appointment of David Mayfield to the Historic Resources Commission. Yesterday, Nancy and I interviewed David Mayfield. Inga Williams was also present as the staff person for the Historic Resources Commission and Teresa Farley support. I know that Pat, you couldn't join us because your computer decided it was time to update and wouldn't let you have any access to it. So my impression was quite positive. David Mayfield has plenty of experience with historic resources and lives in a historic home and there is a particular slot on Historic Resources Commission for a resident of a historic, you know, historic home. So he, and he's familiar with operations of the committee because he has a good friend that's also serving on that committee. So Nancy, we didn't have a chance to discuss the conclusion of that interview, otherwise we would probably have to send the calendar. But we wanted to give Pat's favor for the interview and then move forward this candidacy.
Yeah, I think he seemed confident and, you know, a good choice to fill the vacancy.
I did go over the written material and it looked like a good, good fit. And my computer problems yesterday were with net motion and turning off the computer and starting over doesn't fix net motion. So it took me a little while and apparently I wasn't the only one having troubles with that yesterday. But I wasn't the one.
That's one I have trouble with frequently, so welcome to the club. Yeah, it's, can be a little fuzzy sometimes. Well, we missed you and we'll happily, again, happily entertain a motion to approve the appointment of David Mayfield to the Historic Resources.
I move to appoint David Mayfield to the Historic Resources Commission for the vacant term.
I will second that.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on now to 7.6, discussion of the proposed letter to our legislators with respect to House Bill 2177. Again, not in our package, but I did email it to you all. Do you have it in front of you or should I send again?
Oh, would you send that again, Zane?
Okay. This particular letter is in opposition to House Bill 2177. I ran it past District Attorney Haroldson as well. I've got his comments. The language in this letter is largely from Rob Boebert, the National Association, not National Association of the Oregon Association of Counties. Basically, what the bill proposes to do is to shift the cost of providing technology for, foring the courts from the Oregon Tradition Department to the counties. It wouldn't kick in unless there were more than 500 cases in the district court, but we always are at that level or above. And it doesn't, the other thing that it does is once you reach that 500 case level, it doesn't, they propose not to charge just for the cases above that level, but for all of the first 500 as well. So it's, it's just a cost shifting measure. And I don't feel it's appropriate if the district attorney is a state function. He pays for 96% of the costs of said district attorneys and this is, should just be a court
Well, I appreciate the brief history and just, and I'm familiar with the ongoing the state trying to shift the financing to the counties. And I think this, I'm in strong support of this letter and hope our, and our local electeds will take up this cause.
Yep, and I agree that this is important and we should support it. I support sending the letter.
I would entertain a motion.
I will move to send the letter to our state representative and stand her opposing House Bill 2177.
Second. All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I will ask Teresa's support in putting this on our letterhead and fixing signatures and hitting it out door by email. And I would like to have a copy though to ruffle that association board and county as well. Thank you. Okay, onward. We are now at 8.1 and after this item, then we will be at ever and be ready for our executive session. But 8.1 is a discussion and decision to further extend the declaration of a state of emergency and declare emergency measures. And Vance here up against.
So let us just keep our fingers crossed that this is the last time I have to come before you and ask this question. Way back in March of 2020, you enacted your first emergency declaration related to the pandemic. We are now on, I think, our third extension. This is a request to extend one last time that emergency declaration. The current declaration expires April 30th. As you heard Joe discuss this morning, we are not yet ready to reopen county functions and it appears as if Benton County would be best served by extending the declaration through June 30th, 30th, which we believe will give us enough time coming out of the pandemic such that by July 1st, we may not need the declaration. We are all really, really hopeful that once we get to the new fiscal year, much of the need for the emergency related capability that the board has in emergency declaration will no longer be necessary. But unfortunately, we still need the declaration. We still need to be able to perform some tasks and be able to have the flexibility that the emergency declaration allows, hence the request to extend the declaration through June 30th.
Thank you, Vance. Is there a discussion? Pat?
Vance, how does this line up with the state's emergency declaration caliber?
That I cannot tell you. Joe may be able to. I think Joe has more frequent conversation with Brian Lee and Brian would be the one to pass that information on.
Commissioner, I believe, and I can verify this in email commissioners, but I believe the governor's order is extended until the beginning of May. I think it's like May 2nd, somewhere in there, May 4th. And we don't know if they will be extending that or not.
And keep in mind that-
Brian Lee, Brian Lee isn't aware of that date and he does not think we need to be in sync with the governor's order at this point. And he's hoping, as Vance indicated, that this might be our last extension if we continue to get the amount of vaccines administered that we, that we are. This might be the last extension, but no guarantees.
And keep in mind that Benton County's declaration is completely independent of the state's declaration. So whether the state declaration ends at the same time Benton County's ends doesn't make any difference. For purposes of what our declaration does, it merely gives us the ability to take certain steps, enter into certain contracts outside of our normal processes. Also keeps us eligible for state, for federal emergency funding as long as there's a declaration in place.
That's what I was going to ask. It seemed like there was some advantage to us doing this for funding opportunities. So, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I will once again entertain a motion.
I'll move to a doff order number 2021. If we didn't clear the local board for June 30th, 2021.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I now believe we are ready to move on to executive session. So at this time, we need to clear the room. And it will probably take a couple of minutes because we have camera equipment and John gives time to. So let's return in about five minutes.